All right, I'd like to now call to order the town of Cordera Madera regular town council meeting for Tuesday, May second, two thousand and twenty-three, starting at six thirty P. M. Can we get a roll call?
Councilmember Casissa.
Here.
Councilmember Avasio.
Here.
Councilmember Thomas.
Here.
Vice Mayor Beckman.
Here.
Mayor Lee.
Here. Can we salute and pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and no servile.
All right, so we'll move on to item number two, which is open time for public comment. Any member of the public may address the town council concerning any item not on the council's agenda. Speakers will be limited to three minutes unless otherwise specified by the mayor or presiding officer. Is there anyone in the public that would like to speak to something not on the agenda? Okay, seeing none, is there any online?
We do not have any email public comments, and we have three people online and no hands raised.
Okay, so with that all closed public comment, uh, tonight we have no presentations, so we'll move to item number four, which is the consent calendar. The purpose of the consent calendar is to group items together which are routine or have been discussed previously and do not require further discussion. They will be approved by a single motion. Any member of the town council, town staff or public may request to move an item. Anyone on the town council, anyone from staff? Anyone from the public would like to pull an item? Seeing none, uh, can I call for motion?
I'll move items four A through four D.
Second. Okay. Councilmember Casissa.
Yes.
Councilmember Avasio.
Yes.
Member Thomas.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Beckman.
Yes.
Mayor Lee.
Yes.
Thank you. The motion passed.
Excellent. Uh, we have no public hearings tonight, so moving to item number six, which is business items. Business item six A is the consideration and possible adoption of resolution number twenty-four, two thousand and twenty-three, approving the proposed town park restroom project. Their staff presentation?
Yes, there is.
Excellent.
Good evening, Mayor Lee and members of the town council. My name is Phil Boyle. I'm the senior planner here. Some of you I haven't met before. Nice to meet you, Councilmember Thomas. Um, the project before you this evening is, um, town council, town park, the town park restroom project, um, located in our beautiful town park, of course. I have a brief presentation I'd like to share, and we also have, um, of course, RJ Suko here, Director of Public Works, who's a lead on the project. We also have Tim Berry, who is acting director Parks and Rec online, and I believe, hopefully, we have Steve, and we have Steve Mylar, who is with the company Public Restroom Company, who will be constructing, um, building. All right, oh, thank you, and Rich Pearlstein, um, of Polski Pearlstein Architects here in town, who has graciously volunteered, um, much of his time, a lot of time working on the exterior design and colors. You can answer any questions or add to anything that we need to add. So with that, I will begin my presentation. There we go. So the town park restroom project is located on, um, the northwest corner of the parking lot adjacent to the community center. That small white square you can see on the upper left, um, rough location of where the proposed restroom, um, is to be built. Uh, there's much discussion during Parks and Rec, um, commission, uh, in the staff report outline the various, um, meetings that took place, the, um, the various locations that were considered. And this was the location that was settled upon by the Parks and Rec Commission and by staff and by the planning commission. On the right is a mock-up of, um, where the location, um, you know, a general spot, you know, outline of where the location of the rest spot, restroom, excuse me, is to be. Um, unfortunately, that was, my picture didn't come out today, but I took a picture today, and that is a more accurate photo than when I have in my camera, but not shown here. This is the first version. The second version, uh, that white line should be pushed back about four feet, pretty much where that sandwich board is, and that will be the location of the proposed restroom. And I'll talk a little bit about that, um, in just a moment. In terms of the, um, the look and design of the restroom, um, this is an image of showing the exterior materials, um, the layout, um, the, um, the siding, the wainscoting stone, uh, around the outside, which we'll discuss a little bit in a moment, and then it's also showing the skylights that were, um, proposed. The skylights that were recommended by, uh, the planning commission and added, um, to this image. So that's our front and side rendering of the building. Okay. And then this is another view of the front and side, um, elevation, again highlighting the standing seam metal roof. And skylights for, um, to minimize any lighting needed during the day. Um, we have, um, hardy plank horizontal wood siding along the outside. Uh, we have tile placed in the, the drinking fountain area, um, to give it a, a much cleaner look. Um, so in that center area, you'll have drinking fountains, uh, you'll have a wash basin, uh, water fill, a place to refill water bottles and a place to, um, for dogs or pets to drink as well. Uh, this is a, a more detail of the exterior colors and materials that are being proposed. Um, this is also part of, part in your staff report. And Rich Pearlstein has brought some actual samples. If anyone wants to take a look at the, the colors and the rocks and the various exterior materials, if you want to get into those details. Uh, this is a front elevation, again, just, I, I, obviously without the colors, it's just showing more of the structural and the various elements that will be part of, of the restroom. Um, designed, uh, to accommodate flooding, so we have flood vents. If, if we do have a flood event, the water will just go in and go out and not damage the building. Um, side elevation. And then there's a floor plan. Uh, so the floor plank, the restroom consists of basically four, four rooms for the public. We have a men's room, a women's room, and then two all gender facilities, you know, single use. Um, and then, and, and all the rooms are ADA accessible. And then we also have in the middle, we have the utility chase and storage for, um, for maintenance purposes. There will be lighting at the, um, the top of each door, um, to provide lighting in the evenings. And, um, there will also be, um, the Park and Rec Commission, as well as the Plan Commission talked about security, so there will be wiring, um, for security cameras. And there's also great, uh, love, attention to detail of the exterior finishes to minimize vandalism and to remove graffiti if, if that happen, if that takes place. Now giving you an overview of, of the planning process, um, quite a lot of steps involved. Um, first, just want to mention that the, the town council has prioritized the improvements and public restrooms in town park back in year two thousand and twenty-two and two thousand and twenty-three work plans. There is significant public interest and public support for new restrooms, uh, in the town park master plan. Which is still, you know, still going on. Uh, we had a community workshop back in October, and there was a special meeting in November where the Parks and Recreation Committee were given the, the details and the, um, the results of that public workshop. And that's, like I said before, that's when a lot of discussion took place regarding location and amenities for the restroom. And then in January, or, or this year, Park and Rec Commission unanimously directed staff to bring this design, this location, and the hours of operation to the planning commission for their review and, um, and recommendation. So then I took this to the planning commission in April of this year, and they unanimously approved, um, to bring this forward to you, suggesting, um, providing a couple suggestions. They wanted to add those, um, four skylights, which we did. They also, um, proposed, um, two out of three of them proposed replacing the stone wainscoting with a stucco material. And then all were, um, they were also interested in possibly ways to lighten up, uh, the front elevation in terms of the, the material of the trusses and whether that material can be reduced in, in dimension or possibly reduce the number of, of cord or, or material in that, that truss. We, um, we went ahead, we added the skylights, um, staff had discussed it with, um, the designers and the builders, and we've, we continue to feel that the stone wainscoting is a better product for the building. Um, it's going to be more durable, and we think it has a better look. Um, in terms of lightening up the front elevation, that's certainly a possibility, and we've spoken with the builder of that, and, um, we're exploring, um, that, and that's certainly a possibility, waiting for council's direction on that. Lastly, as I mentioned, the building has been moved back about four feet away from the drive aisle, um, to give more, um, sense of safety, especially for pickup and drop-offs of, of children or, and adults, and just give a little bit more distance between the front of the building and the edge of, of the drive aisle and the edge of that parking lot. We just thought that was a little bit too close. So that's when I referenced that, um, that photo. That is our, our planning process. I do also want to just mention that this is a, um, um, a town pro, there's a town project report written for this, very similar to what we did when we did town hall, and because this is a project sponsored by the town and not a private applicant, there's a special process we go through. That's a quick, um, diagram of, of what the process is. It basically, you know, community outreach. Um, we, we create the town project report reviewed by the planning director, depending upon the scope of, of that project, it will go directly to the town manager or goes to the planning commission and then the town council as this project is. And that's the process we went through for this. So that is the, the brief overview of the town project report process. And, um, with that, I, I would, staff recommends, um, that the council discuss and review the proposed location, design and materials the town park restroom project and approve the attached resolution. That concludes my report, but certainly RJ or other members of staff may have things to add.
Yeah, I just wanted to add some additional comments and kind of walk us back a little bit through the process. Um, so yeah, as, as Phil mentioned, um, the location, I think, was heavily driven about having a central location. There was a lot of comments where parents wanted to be able to send maybe an older child while still to the facility on their own, while still watching their other child play. You know, I think at the planning commission, they were pushing more for it being located behind the community center, kind of tucked away, so less of a focal area. Um, I think one of the drawbacks there is if there ever was a, um, upgrade or improvement to save the green room in the community center, that would obstruct a potential view opportunity was just one option. Um, there were several other feature, um, options, looking at the east side, and there were some noise concerns from Mohawk residents and whatnot. And also putting it, um, on the Cafe Verity side, which you would have kind of a crosswalk crossing the parking lot. Um, and then obviously on the west side of town, um, you have one restroom facility there already, but, um, obviously potential future needs, um, through the master plan process. Um, on the flooding piece, you know, we did consider raising it above the, um, base flood elevation, so we didn't have to put the flood measures, but, um, based on some kind of rough analysis, it'd be raising it about two feet and having these paths that kind of ramp up. It just didn't seem like it was, um, a good fit there. And, and as I'm speaking, I, I do want to invite Rich up to the podium. If he's got comments, I'm going to start talking about some of the, the details that he really helped harmonize. Um, I think we had some, some decent ideas, but we're, we're disjointed, and I really appreciated his work, um, really kind of bringing them together. Um, and so, um, the siding is, as mentioned, is, is a, is a thicker hardy siding, so it's, it's like a cement board that's fairly durable. Um, as you know, we've had a lot of vandalism over the years on the, um, restroom we have, and this gives us the opportunity to paint it. You know, simple, easy, we'll still put some, um, anti-graffiti coatings on it to minimize it, but it really does, um, assist with that. Actually, if you can keep the rendering up. Otherwise, um, yeah, for the planning commission also requested, um, skylights, which I think, um, was a great idea. It, it just wasn't something that had come up prior, so it wasn't incorporated at prior design. Um, but obviously if we can take advantage of natural light and, you know, reduce our, um, energy consumption, that's a great thing. Um, we've gotten quotes from them on that, so that's, um, I show it in the estimate as an additional add-on at about twenty-one hundred dollars each. Um, you could do four for each of the four spaces, but given, um, there's a larger male and larger female, um, area, you know, having two in there seemed appropriate. Um, so that's, I think, what we're kind of, um, recommending, I guess. And then, um, um, to further talk about, um, some of the workshop comments, we did approach, um, the folks in October about their feeling around, um, cameras, right, to deter or prevent vandalism, and overwhelmingly, the response was, yeah, we think that's very appropriate, and today's day and age, that's very normal. Um, so we've gotten a quote for that. We actually think it could come down from what's listed here at twenty thousand, but that would also include a ten-year warranty and monitoring. It's, um, a similar provider that we're considering for, um, the town hall project. As mentioned, there was, um, in the previous rendering, there was, um, the beams and the trusses were kind of more of the six by dimension, and they were, um, wood, and by going down to steel, we can reduce that size to closer to a four by, and kind of, um, the sense was make it, um, more contemporary versus something you might see in Tahoe or something. Um, the state, the stone wainscoting, uh, we, we still are refining, and, and maybe Rich can speak to that. Um, just trying to maybe come up using similar, um, color palette, but possibly, um, just finding it something that's maybe a little more contemporary. And, um, other than that, um, I can speak further. Um, well, I shall, I'll let Rich jump in, and then I can come back and talk about estimates if, um, if we need to. Sure.
I didn't, is this on? Yeah. So, um, I was invited on primarily to consult on materials. So, uh, several months ago, when Public Restroom did their, um, put together their early, uh, presentations, there were several different colors, a wood siding, um, a different kind of rock that was more of a, a rounded rock that had proportions that I, I actually didn't like quite as much. So my request was to, um, to come up with a palette. I just wanted to streamline it a bit, bring it back to one or two different paint colors, find a rock that color-wise worked fairly well with the paints. Um, and just kind of refi, just refine it down. Uh, there, you had started with wood siding, and after our first extensive discussion, we decided that wood was never going to do well with vandalism long-term, and hardy makes sense. It's obviously it's cement-based, it's painted. And if something happens to it, you can, you can repair it. Um, and just briefly, since, uh, stucco was mentioned by planning commission, the first time some kid takes their metal back to stucco, it'll chip or the bike falls, and if, if there are bad hits, the stone, the battle dense. So I think stone is probably going to be more durable, considering all the things that can happen around here. The stone that I picked, and there were a few pieces in that tray of the one that I thought would be nice. Granted, it's not hyper-contemporary. It, I actually think it worked well with the two pink colors that are there. Uh, we had a discussion a few weeks ago, and I sent it through a few links for other stones. I don't know if you have is available tonight, but what I would look for in response to trying to find a more contemporary solution was less of a kind of Ashler look with different sized stones fit together with rounds and, and grays and more of a uniform look. I'm not a huge fan of the small, um, almost ubiquitous, um, ledge stone looks these days, so that the challenge would be if we want to move away from this to find a stone that looks, if not timeless, looks like it belongs at the base of the building and not just on somebody's fireplace. And, and so we have a few things in consideration. Um, trying to think what else I could say right now, maybe just respond to questions. Also, Steve's on, and there are flood vents that are then required, so that if, we hope it never happens, but if, if waters get high enough, there's not enough, um, force on the building that starts to move. We're required to have flood vents. I think the requirement is at least two vents in each room, and there are square footage requirements for it. He may be able to back out a few, and Stephen and I could work on that. If we need them on the front where there's two small stone panels are, maybe we can get them on the sides. So I think we could work on that a little bit as well. The last thing, the tiles in, in the area where the, um, the water fountains are. So this is a, a cement block building, concrete block building. They're exactly eight inches by six inches in module, sixteen inches in module. So that's a two-inch by two-inch tile. I've always been a little nervous about, uh, concrete block buildings with the joints telegraphing as they try to move. So the intent is those two-inch, uh, square tiles will exactly align with the joints. So that when the boat, building tries to move someday, at least that, that happens in the jointing of the tiles, so. That's it for now.
Yeah, and, and both, um, you know, Steve really imparted the importance of having durable materials behind, um, all of those, you know, water feature options as for reasons you expect. So, um, and, and I think the, the addition of these, um, flood vents that I hadn't seen, um, by Rich that actually appear kind of solid and flush, but actually flap open, I thought was, um, was a nice feature. And, um, I, I don't know, Steve, if you have anything you want to add in terms of design before I get into estimate, but, um, I know you, you and your team kind of spent some time working through this with us.
Uh, yeah, good, good evening, council members, and good evening, staff members. Uh, I, I think it's, uh, explained it pretty well. Um, highlighting the importance of when making these restroom buildings, um, the use of materials, uh, that are durable, long-lasting and, um, easily repairable. So, uh, yeah, we've, we've had a couple, couple rounds at getting this building to this point, which, uh, I would have to agree, it is actually quite nice, what, uh, what has come together for this specific building. So, um, definitely open to any questions or, or comments.
And, and maybe just a quick touch on, um, you know, this is prefab and brought to site, which I just think is, is very unique and, and just something worth noting. Maybe you can just talk about that.
Yeah, yeah, so, uh, I, I guess I'll give you just a little bit of background. Our, our company's been doing these, these prefabricated, uh, prefabricated buildings for over forty years. And so there's a lot of things that we've learned over the, over the, that time to make these buildings, um, more resilient, but also make it cost-efficient and easy to maintain. And essentially get to, get on-site quickly. Uh, a, a nice, add a key feature to this is, uh, we, we realize this is a, a park where there's, uh, a lot of activity and construction. Uh, so say, for instance, that this was constructed onsite, uh, this could take several months, uh, for a onsite contractor to do, uh, in good weather. Uh, bad weather obviously could be much more challenging. Uh, in the case of this building, it is two modular units, and what we would do is we would actually truck in uh, both, uh, both modular units on the back of a truck, and we'd use a crane and place them in place, and then we would secure them together and then cover up any delineating lines in between the two modular units. And so then the, the building would look and function as if it was site-built. Um, and so time, time-wise onsite, a, a distinct advantage for this is, I mean, we would be onsite probably for maybe five, five days, um, installing this building uh, as opposed to months, uh, months on end of, of attempting to, to, you know, fence off an area where, where kids or people could get in, uh, potentially get hurt or, or, uh, it's, it's, it would be essentially an eyesore, I think, for a lot of people. So, uh, the, the nice thing is, is we, we build these buildings in our factory. Uh, and we do build them every single day for, for multiple clients all across the nation. And it's nice that you get those same, uh, those same people who build the masons, the welders, uh, technicians, they're all building the same buildings, day in and day out. So, uh, the quality of these buildings, uh, remains at a high point, uh, from start to finish as we deliver these buildings onsite for you guys.
Thank you. I wanted also just round out talking about the fiscal impact. Um, so, so one of the advantages of doing it this way, um, Public Restroom Company is, is part of a cooperative that has already vetted their costs and embedded in their cost is also Steve's time, Steve's design team's time. So that saves us not just, um, it, it, it's efficient, but it's also time efficient. We don't have to hire designer, go through a process, bid it, and all those things. It's all wrapped into one. So, you know, there, there were a couple of comments, um, at planning commission, hey, you know, four hundred and eighty-three thousand dollars for the modular unit, that sounds expensive. Um, but that includes design. Um, so that was the previous estimate before the planning commission, um, comments, and then, um, on top of that, we have the security camera elements that upwards of twenty thousand, but potentially closer to, um, twelve or fifteen. Um, we have some utility and foundation work that, um, Public Works will be working on in advance of Steve and his team showing up. And then I put the skylights as optional, um, twenty-one hundred each for six at twelve thousand, six hundred. So, um, really the estimate's at seven hundred and eleven, but sixty thousand of that is contingency. And, um, I know previous year's budgets where we were very early in the stage may have been less, um, when we did more detailed work in October, it actually was higher. It was actually closer to eight hundred. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions or any of us are.
Okay, so with that all opened up to the council, if you have any questions?
I'll start it off. I have a, it would, I have a couple. Um, you mentioned the, the cost, it went up because, um, initially I think it was like four fifty to about five fifty plus minus is mostly just went up because that was only a rough estimate at that point of time, and I think that was a couple of years ago.
Well, I think the time, um, and, and I don't remember how or when it was presented, the four fifty was for the modular unit, and maybe, um, I, I can't remember who put that together, but it didn't incorporate the utility work and the, um, foundation and whatnot. So likely more of an oversight and, and maybe a slightly off cost escalation. Okay.
And I, and just on that, we did have actually budgeted in our, uh, twenty-two, twenty-three, um, uh, cap, capital improvement plan, our project's, um, budget for twenty-two, twenty-three was, uh, about six hundred and forty thousand. So it has gone up slightly from that, but I think at that time, at least when we were preparing the budget last June, um, uh, you know, we're still expecting it to be around the six fifty range, six forty, six fifty range.
Okay, and then it looks like we're not using any general funds, correct? It's all coming out of, there's three other funds. On those two other funds, uh, measure A, uh, capital grant fund, is there any money left in those funds, do you know?
Um, I believe it uses both, um, years budget for measure A Parks Fund and also the Parks and Lufy as well, the full amounts that are in those funds. Um, the other fund was
Capital.
Per capita grant.
Was a, um, which is one, one-time grant that we were, um, Ashley Howell was successful in getting, um, yeah.
So yes, that, there is remaining budget in the recreation, sorry, the, uh, um, yeah, the recreation capital fund.
Okay. And you know, there, there's a public comment from Patty Stoll regarding seniors and toilets. Can you address that?
Yeah, sure. Um, yeah, so we, we did some, um, quick research, also talked to our, our, um, building official, and, um, really an ADA toilet is slightly higher, roughly nineteen inches, and when you look up, um, separately, like a senior toilet, or they call it a comfort toilet, it's actually at the same height. So they're really the same thing, just, you know, depending on what, where you look at it from.
Non-ADA toilet seventeen inches, so it's that two-inch additional height.
Okay. Right, it was, what are the hours of operations? You mentioned that.
Um, Tim, you want to start with that one? Um, Tim, you wanna start with that one? And fill in the gaps.
Sure, one was first proposed to commission, it was to be open twenty four hours. Uh, we have since decided that we're gonna have it close the hour after the park closes. Um, and then open back up in um the morning sunrise. Um, just for. The use of people who are using the park and the parks closed have not people in the park using it. So an hour after park closes, that's usually sunset. Would be closed uh on the timers and open back up in the morning um as of right now.
Okay, and is that consistent with the other restrooms in Town Park and also at Cove?
The other restrooms at Cove and Town Park are open twenty four hours. They have no doors, they don't close.
Okay, so so this building would have access controls where we can set timers and lock it. And. In the scenario where someone is in the park and is in need of a facility, we do still have the other ones that. Don't have doors that lock. We also have porta potties, so um. There there's backup plans there.
Okay, and I would assume if there's like a special meant like movies in the park, you would just leave it open.
We we would just adjust the programming.
Okay, uh you mentioned cameras. How does the Monty work on that? Is that just on? A roll type thing and if you have to, you go back and look at if something happens?
Yeah, so um good question, and and this is also um similar format we're we're really looking at for the um town hall. They. So by. Code for for government buildings, we're required to retain um one full year of data at all times. So we can't just run a CCTV that runs on a one week loop. We actually have to hold the data. So these cameras are capable of doing that. And they actually are um collect, um they have cell connection. And they will actually put the information in the cloud. And we could be behind a computer and pull up the cameras at any time. We could go back and look to a time and see. Uh, what was happening at a certain time. It has also has facial recognition, so if we have a potential. Person we think is is kind of. Causing trouble, we can actually use that software and it'll show every time that person. Was in the vicinity of those cameras. So it's it's pretty high tech. It's um, I think it's really gonna be um. Possibly the wave of the future for sites like this in town.
Okay, I guess the thing is it's not big brother watching people all the time.
Yeah, no, we're we're not interested, I mean. We're interested in solving um problems that happen. We're we're not interested in um watching what's going on for. Pleasure.
Okay, I just have a couple more. Um, is there any large signage just saying restrooms anywhere on that building? So if I'm in the park on a soccer field or on the east field, I can just look up and instead of just seeing a building over here. I can see the word restroom somewhere, and I'm just saying that because. We may all know it's there, but if you have people that are from out of town, and again, they're playing on, you know, the east field. They look up, they see there's a building there. How would they know it's a restroom unless there's some kind of larger signage?
Yeah, Steve, you wanna just talk about standard um signage on on the doors at least and then. And talk about um additional signage if needed.
Sure, yeah, so uh and I don't know if you guys have the drawing uh up to take a look at, but. Uh, there's several uh pieces of signage that will be uh both on the the physical um exterior of the building, but also on the doors. And I think the doors would be the big key uh key element, uh because it's almost, uh I'll say almost two feet round. Uh, that shows the sign uh obviously for the restroom. And in what's working in your guys' favor with this design too is. Um, three of the four sides of the building have restrooms allocated to them, so the only side that you would not see the signage would be if you were directly. Behind the building, uh because that would only door there would be for the chase. Uh, but yeah, otherwise, I mean, that would be the the standard signage that we put on the buildings.
Okay, thanks. And just last question, if we approve it tonight or it does get approved, what's the timing? Like, when would it start in months to complete plus or minus?
Right, so um Steve, you want to talk about um from the date that ours purchased, what is your current procurement? And delivery and install timing going right now?
Yeah, so let me precursor just a little bit with what's all, I know um RJ's kind of talked about it. Uh, we obviously designed the building. Uh, we engineer it, we send it to the state for state approval, we get state stamped plans back. And then we start to manufacture, build, ship, install all that whole timeline basically from cradle to grave. Is uh I would say right now between ten to twelve months is that timing.
Okay, thanks. So we're looking about a year pl- plus or minus, probably plus. Okay, thanks, that's all I have.
Yeah, and 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 so all of the other um utility foundation work would be done and ready. To receive it as soon as it's ready, as soon as it's shipped.
I have just one question. Um, it came up uh I had, I think it was the planning commission. What is the plan for ventilation of this building? I hadn't haven't heard that discussed.
And Steve, you want to take this one?
Yeah, um, so look at the drawings again, it's kind of hard to see, but the front overhang of the building. Actually has uh passive vents and then side vents as well. Uh, the key is the obviously uh. The solution uh for smell is obviously dilution, so the more you get natural air flowing through the building, uh the better. Uh, we used to double check here. Yeah. It looks like we did uh passive vents on both ends, gable ends of the building to allow air to be uh processed through the building.
So yeah, if I'm um interpreting right, Steve, that you got. Kind of triangular shaped vents underneath the gable, but also um rectangular vents on the side. That correct?
Correct.
Yeah.
Yeah, perfect, right there.
Waiting for um Charles. Um, so uh my only question is about um the relates to the skylights. So the tops of the stalls are open, yes? So, yeah, they don't go all the way up. So, yeah, so it seems like. Either. Um, you know, you could get away with a minimum. I don't think you would need one in each. Since since they're open. And there's nothing, there are no sinks in the bathroom itself, all the hand washing and. All of there are.
Yeah, I know. So um if we can go to the floor plan once again, um fill you up the controls. A- and and as Phil said it up, that was another thing. It's part of the workshop and and outreach, we looked at. You know, your classic, you know, large um. Kind of communal restroom for male and female. We looked at only individual ones and what we decided on was hybrid. Two individual ones, you know, got family, you gotta change your your child, that's great, or you just need that extra privacy. And then we have the larger one, which, you know, has got multiple um water closets. So, yeah.
Yes, it's like.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. Each of them has their own.
Yeah, um, so so four separate rooms. Um, two, right, individual. Um, and then two larger ones.
Okay. Right, okay. I'm so used to seeing them centrally located. I was like, where are they? So, okay, thank you. That was my only actual question.
Okay, um, so you'd mentioned that the planning department had discussed uh. Possible other locations. Did the Parks and Rec Department bring that up before or in the public process? Of basically establishing preferred spots, which was a map that was given to the public. Was it determined that this was the best space in both of those meetings prior to going to the planning commission?
That's correct. Yeah, there were um. Believe it was eight locations that we had um estimates and a map with numbers showing them. And out of that process and outreach and the workshop, they um the consensus was this Eastman parking lot location.
Okay, all right. Um, with these finish updates, uh could these be applied to the existing restroom as well? Uh, over by the skate park to kind of create a compatible experience uh in the park as we move forward in the master plan?
I I'm sure it could. We would just weigh the cost benefit of doing something new versus kind of a renovation. Got it. Although that one, right, is different shaped, it's.
Yeah, I understand. Okay, um, so could the cameras also be applied to the existing restroom if it? Proves out to be a a a good system?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, could the flood panels be painted so that they're the same color, this is the structure or something that's more compatible and not? That lighter color or steel or whatever?
Yep, absolutely.
Uh, that's all. Is there any more questions soon? Okay, all right. So with that, I'll close a question from the council and open it up to public comment. Is there anyone in the public that would like to speak to this agenda item? You wouldn't? Yeah, please step up and you uh you have three minutes. Yeah.
Hi, my name is uh hi everyone, my name is Ariana Lem. Uh, I think Mr. Casissa said that the restaurant is open twenty four hours. A day, right? So that means, does that mean uh the park is open twenty four hours?
The process of public comment is we won't give feedback until you've made your three minute statement, and then any questions can be handled by staff if appropriate.
Oh, okay.
So is was that all you wanted to s- state?
Um, yeah.
Okay, all right. So Steph, would you, are you able to respond to that?
I'm gonna go to Tim again, since he's. A- and and in some ways, we're we're kind of looking at at piloting it as well, but um Tim, you wanna talk about and respond to that?
Yeah, the park has a curfew of eleven o'clock already where you can't be in the park after that hours, and that is what sends them run pretty, this has been pretty PD patrols. Um, but like I said, we are planning on having him shut as a pilot program an hour after sunset, especially except if there are special events where you have him open later. But it will not be open twenty four hours, but right now the pilot program is the plan an hour after sunset is closed, so there's not people in the park um at all hours of night.
Okay, thank you. Uh, is there anyone online or do we have any public comment?
Yes, we have five people online and we have two hands raised. The first is from Lucinda Smith. And Lucinda, you should be able to um share your comments now.
Okay, thank you. Um, I think I like the uh. D- design really nicely. Um, you answered a number of my questions already, but what is the? Is it possible to include what the source of the electricity is or how you're going to do the lighting and manage the cameras? Okay, do I just ask the question and then you respond? Okay. Um, I would also make a comment about that uh nice lower part of each side of the building. I you called it the rock or the stone portion. I think it's really nice, but I think if somebody comes along with a spray can. And they just do their graffiti, it'll be a nightmare even if it's possible to clean. So maybe something was more of a flat uh surface, I think might be more advisable just because. Unfortunately, you have to take into consideration vandalism. Um. And I'm assuming that the flush toilets, and I apologize, these points have probably already been covered in other meetings, but I haven't been able to attend. So um I uh would ask, are these going to be flush toilets so there'll be a source of water? Uh, not only for the basins, but for um the toilets. Um, and I would like to support the ADA. Uh, type um installation of the toilets. Uh, so I think that that's more accessible for everybody, including the seniors. Thank you.
I'm happy to respond to those. Um. And 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 I'm glad she brought up some of these questions. Um, in particular, um, we're looking at the feasibility of pulling electricity. From the community center, which as you all know, we recently invested in the solar and battery backups. And so that really gets us on a path of really trying to be self sustainable. Um, we, you know, perhaps we need to add a few more panels, but that's not a difficult task. And thus far, again, preliminary, it's looking like that's a feasible option, so um we're excited about that. And then, yes, this will have um full, you know, running potable water. And then it will have on the sanitary side a um. All of all the sewer would be used through an ejector pump back into the collection system. And then on the, and then, yeah, on the um uh the stone wainscoting and concern of vandalism, I I do. Um, hear that comment. Um, but I would say um. Sure, it would be a task, but um you would be very surprised how strong pressure washers are. Um. You actually often, even with one that you could buy. Um, for like a residential use, if you go full s- full strength, it'll take off concrete. And we have a um very high power commercial grade ones, so um we'll we'll make it work.
Okay, I think there was another hand up.
Yes, um Patty stole here.
Thank you, and yeah, I did hear um the explanation about the toilet height being. Between seventeen inches or nineteen, but I missed the part whether we were going with the nineteen. I hope that's what what the answer was. Okay, good. And then the other question is the um the bar that goes across the front, I think it's a steel beam. Is that made to support like seven or eight eighth graders? Because it looks like. Uh, a potential game to hang off the bathroom, so that I just uh wondered about the height of it. Is it reachable? Thanks.
Um, so yeah, each um, there will be um several of these ADA toilets. Um. Uh, uh, so that 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 part's on issue. Um. The trusses, they need to meet all the same building code. It's at least thirty pounds per square foot. I don't know, um, Steve, if you want to add to that.
Yeah, I'd be happy to. Yeah, so being that that's, you know, their metal trusses, they are, they are very sturdy. We're used to putting very heavy snow loads on these buildings, uh specifically up in Lake Tahoe. Uh, so yeah, those will be very, very resilient, and the heights for those will be, uh, the tops of the doors will be about seven feet. Six inches if I'm correct, so you probably still a bit higher. Um, in- inching up close to eight feet high, so it would not be an easy task to get up there. Uh, but uh most definitely be able to uh to support that weight. And then uh to help answer the ADA question. There are six toilets in this restroom, um and four of those toilets are ADA accessible, so that is in excess. Of California code, so definitely a nice feature for for your uh. Your local residents.
And then mayor, we do have a hand raised for um Suzie Beatty.
Hi there. I'm so glad you're doing this project and it's really coming, it's really gonna happen. We need it so badly. So thank you, everybody. I hope this goes through. Um, I I'm wondering about uh. What happens when a bunch of little kids go in to change their clothes? You've got five of them going in there to change their soccer clothes. Inside those rooms and are gonna lock doors. Uh, I don't know, is that a problem in those uh in that in that? One bigger room that they might uh might be using. Um, that's just a a thing to think about. Um, the other thing is, are there? It's just simple thing, are there hooks inside the stalls, particularly in the women's room? Because backpack, you have your backpack or your purse, you're going in, you use the toilet, and you gotta put your purse on the floor sometimes. You know, a place to put things. Uh, that would be something that I would like to see. And I also thank you for doing the taller toilets. Being a tall person with a bum knee, it's really nice to have that. So thank you all. That's all.
Um. Steve, you want to talk? I I'm guessing we have some panic bars and whatnot, and then you want to talk about the hooks as well?
Yeah, of course. So each of the uh each each restroom stall will have a hook. So any of the enclosed spaces inside the shared men's and women's, uh those restrooms will have. So any of the enclosed spaces inside the shared men's and women's, uh, those restrooms will have hooks on the backside of the uh, either the doors or on the walls. And then in the individual family restrooms, those will have hooks as well. So you'll have a place to hang your purse or coat or jacket or change your clothes. And then um, sorry, what was the last question on that?
Um, the, the door hardware, are they panic, um, panic bars or how are they?
So, yeah, so for, so for the family, for the family restrooms, uh, they will have um a lockable deadbolt in there. They'll have an access key to the exterior, so if for whatever reason uh maintenance needs to get in there, they can't. Uh, but uh by California code, you have to have a way for someone to lock themselves in the restroom and not be locked in upon.
We don't have any other hands raised or email public comment on this item.
Okay, so with that, I'll close a public comment and bring it back to the council for final discussion.
Okay, thank you. Um, just a, a couple thoughts. Um, I am good with the skylights. I think that'll be helpful and and save, um, you know, money on electricity for lighting during the daytime. Um, I like uh keeping the stone as opposed to stucco. I understand uh Lucinda's comments and I'm glad to hear that our power washer has the firepower to take off graffiti. And I think the cameras will help with that too. Uh, my only thought was, um, I, I feel like if it closes an hour after sunset, especially in the winter, that might be a little early. And it still seems like you're likely to have folks walking their dogs or taking their kids out or whatever. Um, even if it's at like five PM uh or six PM. So I was thinking if we could maybe have the restroom closed at the same time the park closes, so at eleven PM or something, that might be a better way. Uh, like a, a better balance between like having more, more available hours, um, but not having like the risk of folks going in there in the middle of the night. That's all. Thank you.
Um, just a couple of comments. I did attend all of the planning meetings and I just want to say that I think an excellent job was done here in bringing the community in and listening to the community. Uh, they did overwhelmingly choose this location and I think um the town did a really great job here of, of hearing out the community. So I really support it. Um, my only concern is that it's a little more expensive than we were hoping it was gonna be, but that's the time that we're living in. Inflation is what it is and uh, so I, I hope we can make this go forward today.
Uh, I also agree. It was a wonderful job and um I love the design. Um, I would say that um in between the two tile backs, um, I would go with the lighter one because the um, it, it's, it's great that it's dark because I think it will recede into the trees and it won't be as, you know, here's a bathroom. Um, so I think it's, 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 that's good, but to have a little bit of relief from that darkness with the lighter uh, 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 one inch, two inch tile would be good. Um, I agree with the idea of moving it back four feet. And um, as far as uh lightening up the um, the trusses, there's a, these diagonal lines. Is, I don't know if they're, they're, have to be there for support, but I'm wondering if those diagonal lines could be removed with that sort of, make it a little more airy, just a thought. Um, and then, um, as far as marking the um, marking the bathrooms, I'm in uh favor of the, the universal symbols as opposed to it written out restrooms. I think everybody kind of knows what those look like and they kind of look cool. Um, and of course I didn't bring my reading glasses, so I'm all right. Um, I think that is, oh. Oh, well, I think this might be for a later meeting, just let me know, but is the can, as far as, no, I, I guess we talked about the camera policy, but that'll be, okay. Okay, I, oh, one more thing. Um, as far as the um, the, the trim on the bottom, um, I think having something that's not too smooth kind of reflects the barks of the tree. And so you kind of have this, you want to sort of feel this rustic element. And so um I'm for um having something that's not too smooth um when, in that design. And those are my thoughts.
Thank you. I, I can support the project also. I want to thank staff and also Rich for all the great work you guys, you did on this. And also uh the Park and Rec Commission and also the Planning Commission. I think sometimes you go, people think it's a painful process because you're probably looking at two years plus from start to finish. But I think going, taking that time to do the community um outreach and engagement, Park and Rec Commission means it leads us to the point where we have a pretty much finished project and you come to us and there's not a lot left for us to do. Um, so I think it's just, it's a great job overall. Uh, I'm good for the skylights. Some of the design phases, I'll leave it up to Rich and staff and Rosa. You guys have more expertise than I do in, in that. Um, one thing was it did bring up, do we have a, or will we be having a policy on the security camera?
And I don't know, I may, the, eh, we've discussed with Amy, um, really the requirements by the state are retaining one year of footage and also displaying that you're being on camera. So those are the two main ones. Um, so we'd obviously adhere to those and I, I think if there's a need for further definition, we would address it at that time.
Okay, it's just something to think about because it broadens out, you know, when would that footage be looked at? Like you said, if only graffiti, something happened. It's just sometimes to nail down that instead of just going, hey, here's two state laws that I placed to. But I'll leave that up to uh Amy and to yourselves. And again, that's it again. I can totally support this. Thanks.
Yeah, like before, okay, you're good. Okay, so just a few things. Uh, number one, so this is a design build, right? Basically, to, to refer to that comment, um, design build is a traditionally for like state parks, federal parks, uh, these kit buildings. It's very much an efficient and correct way to structure it. So I just wanted to acknowledge that at the council level, that's understood. Um, what I would recommend for the pressure washer is really a density of material to be able to take that type of pressure. So it could be a consideration for this n- material decision. Um, and for signage and wayfinding, um, you know, I, I do a lot of wayfinding at the airport and ultimately that's a master planning process. And I think if that's something that wants to be defined and understood, it should be a master plan for all. Uh, and that this in itself shouldn't take that burden on itself. Um, so, but with that, I also, I, I think that the natural light is a great uh sustainable add. Um, I like the four-inch move and the thinning of it. I think that it is a truss and the truss needs cords. And if you reduce the cord, it'll become a minimalist approach and those minimalist triangular kind of uh with a center cord is not appropriate for the rest of the design of the building. Um, there is a certain degree of kind of nature and, and, and parks and rec that is uh overall like a aesthetic within that building and minimalizing it too much would create, would, would necessitate more understanding about how the building is compatible to that, in my opinion. Um, and then, yes, I, you know, I, as I talked about the density, I don't think stucco would be appropriate just from the uh durability standpoint. Um, and I also think that the four-foot move back is appropriate based on that curb drop-off and, and just the stuff. There's nothing really behind it to conclude why you wouldn't do that, uh, because the function here it is, is, that's the best. So, so with that, if there's no more comment, um, can we open it up for, oh? Oh, yeah, uh, so we already had, did, did we already open it up for public comment? Um, so usually there's only one, we can open it up if, 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 if you, if we'd like. But um, you know, you can also get the process ultimately, staff is always available to receive uh public comment outside of the um, the council meeting.
As are we.
Yeah, okay. So um with that, I'm looking for a motion.
Okay, I'm gonna make the motion approved resolution number twenty-four slash two or twenty-three. And I'll second.
Okay. Councilmember Casissa?
Yes.
Councilmember Avasio?
Yes.
Councilmember Thomas?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Beckman?
Yes.
And Mayor Lee?
Yes.
Thank you, and the motion carries.
Okay, with that, we'll close business items and move on to number seven, which is council reports. Town manager Adam Wolf, if you have a report. Thank you.
Thanks, Rich.
Thanks, Rich.
Yes, thanks. Thanks to Rich. I'd like to add my thanks to Rich and, and also on that last item, just to Ashley Howe as well for leading the process um through most of the last couple of years um with RJ as well. Um, the only thing I have to report, I just real quickly on uh housing element. We have our last um day of our seven-day public comment on our revisions, um, our second round of revisions. Um, and then we will be submitting our um, our, our comments to HCD for their um, second round of um also looking at our housing element. Um, I am confident that we, in talking to our reviewer, that we will have an expedited process, what that looks like. I'm not exactly sure, but the schedule, they have a maximum of sixty days to review. I'm hoping there will be a couple of weeks and I, I think really like I mentioned last time, the, the comments are pretty targeted. So looking at uh Planning Commission, hopefully bring this to Planning Commission in May. I think it's the second meeting in May and then trying to get this back to the council um for either the June sixth or the June twentieth um council meeting for um adoption. So looking forward to that. And with that, I will, I have no, nothing else to report.
Okay, so I'll open it up to the council for reports.
Um, I attended a um Marin Healthy Youth meeting yesterday and um they continue their work on um reducing the accessibility of cannabis and um THC in Marin.
Okay, just uh, just a couple of things for me. First of all, I want to thank Public Works for the work on the median strips. I had been hearing a lot from some of the beautification vigilantes in town that it looked like it was all dying and that we hadn't watered during the drought. And I think what was happening is we were having a very late spring because of the cold temperatures. And so now that the blossoms are coming out and you can see that the plants are actually alive, the trim work that you did and everything along there looks really good. And just to answer a couple of other questions, I've received the height of the grasses right now, I know, is intentional along the pathways. It's nesting season, so that's why, correct me if I'm wrong, but we wait until nesting season is over before we go in and, and weed whack all those uh weeds away. So they're, they're weeds with a purpose right now. And then secondly, I did attend a TAM meeting and the big discussion was on crossing guards. They were actually planning to cut back some of the crossing guards that they had, have had there for years due to some numbers that fell off during uh COVID. But there were enough residents who attended the TAM meeting that they convinced TAM to go ahead and support the crossing guards, which I think most of us were glad to see. And then finally, I did attend the summit of the cities in Denver. It was amazing. I'm still trying to figure out exactly how much of it I'm going to be able to retain. It was a lot. Um, but basically there is a whole department within the State Department that exists to help cities in America, both South America and North America um, have best practices when it comes to climate adaptation and uh emissions reduction. And so they're sort of there. It's a free service. They're, they, they will um connect you with consultants for the, for the heavy lifting of the project, but they're there to really help. So I will forward to Adam the information that I collected and the, and the contacts in case you want to call the State Department and, and, and ask for help. That's all I got.
Thanks. Uh, I attended the Castle Brenner Working Group uh meeting, which was last week. Um, I deemed that project a total success. Um, we're actually cutting it back to an ad hoc committee, which means we're just gonna meet on as-needed basis. And if anybody hasn't had a chance, Homer Bown has a great video on one of their residents. Uh, Michael Moriarty actually posted on the Coroner Chronicles, um, which really, I think touches everybody. Sorry to see that. I attended Marin Transit Board yesterday. Uh, the budget for twenty-three, twenty-four was approved. Uh, their scheduling changes scheduled for June eleventh. Marin Transit does a really good job with outreach. I'm getting those changes out into the community and also found this out yesterday, students during the summer ride free. Um, so just kind of keep that in mind. Also, I attend Twin Cities Disaster Preparedness and also the Park and Rec Commission meeting, which I think was a week ago, Monday or so. Um, and the master plan is still in progress. Hopefully we see that in the, in sometime in the next two months or so, um, the almost finished product. That's it.
I had a uh CMSA Finance Committee meeting last week. Uh, that went well. Nothing major to report, just kind of gearing up for budget season. Um, toured uh the Marin Wildfire Prevention Authority's uh fuel reduction work um over in Marin City and saw uh Fred there, so that was excellent. Uh, they're doing really, really fantastic work um around just protecting, uh, you know, they're, they're showing us basically uh how they're constructing these shaded fuel breaks, uh, which are basically areas with less vegetation, so that if and when a wildfire comes through, it will be easier for firefighters to gain control of that fire before it's able to threaten structures. That was great to see. Um, and then one other thing I wanted to mention, and this uh goes back to, I believe it was either one or two meetings ago when we got the annual uh crime statistics presentation and Chief of Police Michael Norton uh mentioned uh that they do ride-alongs. And, and I think, I think they're open to members of the public, not just council members, but I took them up on the offer. I don't know why it took me five years to do it. Uh, but I went and did a ride-along um with Sergeant Enrique Lopez and it was just a really awesome educational experience. So uh shout out to CNPA for the good work that they're doing and I'd highly recommend uh the Ride-A-Log program to anyone who's interested. Thank you.
All right, thanks for all those. Um, I attended two events this last weekend. One was um uh Children's Art in the Park related, related to um our new recycling bins that have been installed. Um, and we took a tour and it, it's very wonderful. Um, I recommend everyone go out and look at how children uh care about this planet and, and how important recycling in, is to them. And I also attended a um, a youth-led uh interview panel of uh eleven mayors and Marin um at the, at the Santa Fel. Um, uh, Marin, the county uh chambers, um, great questions, really engaging. Um, and uh it was also sponsored by the um, the Women League of Voters. Um, and, and I just felt like uh it was a great event to see so many students and interested uh youth um get up and really uh engage. Uh, I attended the uh Chamber of Commerce uh today. Um, and everything's proceeding uh, uh, as, as planned, the Fourth of July, uh Oktoberfest. Um, they're still um not to the two thousand nineteen level, which was ultimately the best level they've ever had for DOT and other things. But um they're trending better than they did during um COVID, so that's good. And uh they're, they're working with staff on a few different issues related to the um state of the town, which sounds like it might be a barbecue. And um also working with town staff and trying to make this Fourth of July, uh, you know, as special as we know and have seen in the Parks and Rec Master Plan uh to be the best event it can be. So uh very happy to hear that dialogue. Um, so with that, I'll close the board member reports. Oh, and move to the discussion of the draft agenda for upcoming board meeting or town council meeting. Is there any comments, concerns, questions? Okay, so with that, we'll close that and I'll adjourn the meeting. Yes, now we have sanitary desk. All right, here we go. I'm now bringing order to sanitary district number two, uh, meeting, a subsidiary district of the town of Corder Madera. This is a regular meeting for Tuesday, May second, twenty twenty-three, starting at seven forty. Um, can I get a roll call?
Board member Casissa?
Present.
Board member Avasio?
Present.
Board member Thomas?
Present.
Vice President Beckman?
I am here.
Present.
Yeah, um, we've already done the roll call, so I mean, uh, salute to the flag, so we won't do that. And uh I'd like to adjourn to closed session.
Um, Mayor, if we could just open up for a public comment?
Oh, public comment first. Okay, so public comment for the closed session. Okay, so um if anyone in the public would like to make a comment regarding the closed session item, uh, please do so now. Seeing none in pu- in, in, in person, is there anyone online?
Uh, we have one attendee. Uh, we have one attendee, but not with the hand raised, and we don't have emailed public comment on this item.
Okay, so with that, I'll close public comment and adjourn to close session regarding this item. Okay. So moving on to item two C, we're gonna reconvene into open session. Um, and two D, uh, there's nothing to report out of the closed session. So we'll open this up for public comment. Seeing no one in the room, is there anyone online?
We do not have any attendees online, and we don't have any emailed public comment.
Okay, so I'll close public comment. No presentations. Moving to number five, the consent calendar. Uh, the purpose of the consent calendars to group items together, which are routine or have been discussed previously, do not require further discussion. Is there any item that would like to be pulled by any uh council staff, public? Okay, can I get a motion?
I'll move item five A.
Second.
Board member Casisa?
Yes.
Board member Avasio?
Yes.
Board member Thomas?
Yes.
Vice President Beckman?
Yes.
Presently.
Yes.
Thank you, the motion carries.
All right, uh, so we'll close of items five, item six, public hands, seeing none, moving on to the business items. Item number seven A is the consideration and possible authorization to the district manager to execute a design contract with Schaff and Wheeler Consulting Civil Engineers for the Paradise Pump Station. RJ?
Thank you. Board presently and members of the board. Um, so in April of two thousand twenty-one, um, as you may recall, uh, we initiated a sewer system master plan process, um, using a consultant GHD. Um, we are two years into that, and um you know, we're getting closer to having a presentation to you all on that. Um, we're, we're kinda reviewing the initial draft at this point in time, but um something that has come up, or a couple of things that we'll, we'll touch on over the next um several council meetings is, is a need for some immediate improvements, in particular at our Paradise Pump Station. So that's our largest pump station that sends practically all of our um effluent cross Corredere Creek into Central Marin Sanitation Agency. And so, you know, we really want to um jump on these deficiencies and minimize the time that you know, we're in the current condition with this um old and um kind of aged um equipment. And so this contract really um is looking at the whole pump station as a whole. We, we have some draft. You, you'll see the bolted and italicized items. These are still in draft form from our master plan, but as you can see, there's, there's a number of needs for upgrades or deficiencies that need to be addressed, and that's part of this effort that would be done by Schaff and Wheeler. Um, this probably will turn into a six to eight million dollar project, which we can decide if we wanna phase over as one or, or multiple phases, um, as we kind of understand it more in detail. Um, but generally speaking, um, the cost of the scope for a project of that construction cost value i- is, is very um competitive and um uh and favorable. Um, we did reach out to a couple firms, um, and really for this type of work, it's specialty work, and um, it's in high demand these days, so it is even difficult to find someone. And so we were able to find someone, um first off, and then secondly, someone who we have a lot of um, you know, experience within and has had a, a very good track record for us. And so um we think um instead of doing a more um extensive search with you know, long interviews and whatnot that we proceed without delay and, and issue the contract to Schaff and Wheeler. And um unless there's anything else, I'll just here to answer questions.
Okay, so I'll open it up to the council for any questions.
Um, with the proposed uh new unit, um, what are the um guarantees and assurances, and is there any extended warranty or anything like that that we could get?
Yeah, so on um, so right now, we're, we'll just be initially the design is, there'll be some hydraulic analysis. They'll be looking at replacing pumps and other equipment, um really preparing a full set of design plans. Um, and then as part of that process, um, we can see, you know, are there options? Do manufacturers even offer extended warranties? And if so, we can then put that in our specifications.
Okay, thank you. That's my only question.
I think I remember reading this in here. I'm just looking. You said that uh that Schaff and Wheeler was the only like responsive uh qualified bidder, but you guys are confident that their bid is competitive.
Yes, um, so we reached out to um nude engineering, Schaff and Wheeler, and also asked around for, um, you know, talked to all of our brother, sister sewer agencies of who they have, and really um didn't get people who were, that didn't get met of all other than nude engineering, Schaff and Wheeler, and, and dude engineering said they just don't have capacity right now. Um, typical design um costs is usually between ten and fifteen percent, depending on the complexity in the project. So if you think about a six to eight million dollar project and a five hundred thousand dollar design cost, plus we did initiate fifty thousand dollars to kind of do some initial assessment work. We're actually under um ten percent.
Thank you.
Okay, so with that, I'll close uh council questions and open it up to public comment. Seeing none um in person, is there anyone online?
You don't have anyone online, and we don't have emailed public comment either.
Okay, so we'll close public comment and bring it back to the council for any uh final deliberation. Make it a motion then?
I'll move that we authorize the district manager to execute a design contract with Schaff and Wheeler Consulting Civil Engineers for the Paradise Pump Station Rehabilitation rehabilitation project for a not-to-exceed amount of five hundred and twenty-five thousand and eighty-four dollars, project number twenty-three two oh two.
I'll second it.
Board member Casisa?
Yes.
Board member Avasio?
Yes.
Board member Thomas?
Yes.
Vice President Beckman?
Yes.
Presently.
Yes.
Thank you, the motion carries.
Yeah, with that, uh closes the business items. We'll move on to number eight, which is the district manager and board member reports. District manager, do you have a report?
Just a quick update. Um, I know we've been talking about uh um bringing a presentation to you about um the CIP plan, which will also then dovetail into the rate study. Um, we're just still going through it. It's a lot of material. Um, we've got CMSA involved. We've got um some other engineering um firms involved, and so we're a little behind what we thought we'd be, but still hope to have that um in front of you here in the next um four to six weeks.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, is there any board member reports? Okay, seeing none. Uh, discussion of draft agenda for upcoming board members, anybody? Okay, uh adjournment, the warriors.